We'll go ahead and call our mid-month commissioners meeting order for all of Wood. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Tim Jenkins going to say the invocation for his pastor.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you, Lord, for the blessings you have given. Lord, thank you for these beautiful mountains that you've placed us in. And I pray, Lord, that you bless this board of commissioners as they strive to do what's good for the people that live in this county. May your word guide them, may your spirit lead them, that the words on this wall in God we trust will not just be four words, but be planted in each one of them's heart. That everyone, everywhere will know that it's in you we trust. We thank you and we praise you, for it is in the name of Jesus Christ our Savior we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only agenda, we've got one little change in general business, section C, item four, line item transfer. That was taken care of last meeting. So we'll be skipping over that.
We accept the agenda with that modification.
Second motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Above. The comment time. Anyone have anything to comment about? Is the public be the time right now? Seeing no motion, we'll close public comment section. Moving on down to presentation of the board. Financial update. Ms. April Hand, finance officer.
Morning. I have something to hand out to you. Okay, the finance update's going to be just a little different this morning. I'm going to do an initial wrap-up for you for the end of the fiscal year, since we've just rolled over to the new fiscal year. Year-to-date revenue ended up, and these are un-audited numbers, I will remind everyone, year-to-date revenue seventeen million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand and thirty-one dollars. That is actually three, close to four percent over the projected revenue for the year. Year-to-date expenditures was fifteen million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. That was right at ninety-two point two percent of the prediction of the year. So that, that actually, if you'll go on down through the un-audited net financials, the difference between those two numbers is one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that is our un-audited fund balance for the year. Now, I'll remind everyone, there's adjustments to that that need to be done. We're going through the end-of-the-year procedures that we have to go through, so, but that is where we stand right now. The bank balance as of six thirty twenty-one, seven million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. A year ago, the bank balance as of June the thirtieth was three million, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, three hundred and, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Our audited fund balance as of six thirty twenty twenty, three million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And then if you add the one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, you come to a total of five million, three hundred and forty-three dollars, forty-three thousand dollars and thirty-nine dollars, sorry. Too many numbers this morning. If you look to the right across, we're, I'm giving you kind of a snapshot of the major funds that we also take care of. The fire tax fund, the un-audited balance for this year, a hundred and sixty-two thousand and twenty-three dollars. The earthquake fund, forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. The occupancy fund, a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The transportation fund, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. The PSAP or the 9-1-1 fund, sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The COA slash courtroom fund that was set up for the construction, we have eight thousand and seventy-eight dollars left in that. The fairgrounds fund, nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. And then the transfer facility, a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Can I, can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Very good job.
I'm not presenting the sales tax numbers to the board this morning, just because that, we just got the main numbers in. They have to be put back in the last fiscal year. But I can tell you, it added about a hundred and two, a hundred and three thousand dollars to those numbers. So those numbers are going to end up one point one million plus for sales tax, just the counties portion.
Sounds good. Thank you, then.
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Is that why you're smiling so much?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Monday morning.
I think it's a great report compared to last year.
Oh, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is facilities update. Public Works Director, Mr. David Spicer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Good morning.
Morning.
Certainly, as we've come a little ways since last meeting, the report, the courthouse is mostly completed as far as the earthquake damage is concerned. The weatherproofing that was being waited on to finish up the punch lifts is here. So they're coming this week. I'm sure that's depending on the weather, because it's an outside job. So they're coming this week hopefully to get that weatherproofing put on and the punch lifts finished up, so that'll take care of the earthquake damage at the courthouse. Of course, we know that the roof, there's a plan there, and that's going to happen as quickly as the contractors get here to fix it. So we're working on that, and then we'll finish the plaster work in the stairwells in the front of the courthouse, once that is completed. The daymark building is in progress. The sheet rock is up, finished. They're working on getting painted. The cabinets is going up. The carpet was ordered. Hopefully, the carpet will be here this week. There's been just a little bit of delay on that, but we're sort of at the mercy of those suppliers and shippers. So those things is coming along. The COA work from earthquake damage is in progress. All of the sheet rock has been reattached and has been patched. So now, we've got a painter that's going to come in. He should be there within the next couple of weeks. So two to three weeks, we should be completed on the COA work. The Ninety South Main project, that's still in the works as far as the engineers and the state people is concerned, but they're formulating a plan, I think, now to assist us with that. So Ninety South Main, hopefully before long, we'll have some answers on that. The transfer facility, we do have a cement pad now, so we've got the cement pads in place. The recycling compactor has been ordered. So hopefully, in the next ten weeks, that will show up, I hope. So again, we're waiting on the manufacturer and shipping, so hopefully that will come, come right on pretty soon, and we'll get that fixed. Electrical components is already fixed and ready, so we're ready for them to come set it, and then we'll have it in operation. So the loader, I know we've had an issue with it, but it is back up and running. So there was a part that had to be made for it. Was able to find someone, I think it was in King, they was able to find that could make that on a CNC machine. So that was taken care of, and it was fixed at the end of last week, and it's up and, and still running for now. The tipping floor, we had a little issue with the tipping floor where some of the welds had broke. That has since been repaired, so that's back down and, and in good shape. We're in the process of getting some quotes. I've been in contact with a company that specializes in tipping floor repair. They have a material, it's like concrete, but they say it's much tougher, much better. So they're supposed to be getting with us, and they've actually got another site visit to do in North Carolina. They're, they're out of state, but they're coming to North Carolina. So they're going to let me know when, when they have the other one arranged, so we can arrange a meeting with them at the transfer facility, so they can open that up. So we're working on the tipping floor, and hopefully, we'll have the, everything up and going. I'm supposed to meet with the inspector Wednesday. The state inspector for the transfer facility, he'll be coming up along with an engineer, so that we can work out a plan as far as a temporary tipping floor and what to do while we're working on the tipping floor itself. We also have a meeting tomorrow, I believe at nine thirty, with the folks who own the Dussault loader or sold us the Dussault loader. So we're going to be talking with them, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get some answers from them. Administration building, we're, I talked to the contractor this morning. He's going to try to start this week on fixing and making repairs here in the administration building that was caused by the earthquake. So we're well on our way to having some of these things accomplished and some of these things done. Other than that, everything else is pretty good shape. We're running right along, still busy, but it's okay. We're, we're making progress.
Questions, comments? Appreciate that good report, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the register of deeds. Mr. Brandon Root.
Chairman, I think he's over number three.
In missing call.
Oh, 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 excuse me.
Don't go skimming me.
Come on up, Mr. Parks Recreation. Can't see with him, can't see with that.
Good morning. Just give you a little update on fairgrounds. First major event this past weekend under my belt. Learning experience. Good to see what works and what doesn't work. Estimating probably two thousand, twenty-five hundred people in attendance. Don't really have a good way to gauge that, but hopefully, we can fix that going forward with providing wristbands or tickets or something to that effect to the event holder. Concessions, it worked out well. They had a line, they were busy the entire time. Learning, need more trashcans when I thought we had enough. I picked up a lot, a lot of barrels from Pioneer Eclipse, and still wasn't enough. But, but yeah, learning experience. In a meeting that Michael and Drew and Steve Mason and Aaron Ray and I had last week, we've discussed, you know, going forward, the future of the fairgrounds, which you have is the application for the use of the fairgrounds and its facilities. So you can take a look at that, mull it over, get back to us on what you would like to see in that and what you wouldn't like to see. And we'll move forward on the application process. We've also discussed more representation. Right now, we have the TDA, the Fairgrounds Committee, the county represented. We think that it would be a good idea to have the town represented, because they provide traffic control for us, water, that kind of thing. And also having the chamber on board in these discussions going forward.
You had a full house out there Saturday night?
Yeah.
It looked real good.
Good crowd. Overall, I think it went pretty smooth. I was worried about parking and that kind of thing, but that didn't end up being an issue at all. And overall, I think it was, went well for me having no direction and just throwing at it, but.
Questions, comments?
I mean, just quickly looking through here, this application has changed a little bit, but one thing that stands out is number six, about the PA system being turned off. I thought that this board did away with that several, several years ago, with that requirement. I don't remember, remember it being left in there.
It, it wasn't. It was removed.
We don't have a noise ordinance in this county, and I don't even know how that originated to be in there, to be turned off at eleven o'clock. But like I say, I think it was four or five years ago, the board did away with that requirement.
And again, I mean, and that's, that's stuff for y'all to make notes, and we can, when we come back together, we can address any other issues that you see in there.
Mr. Chairman, another issue that's going to come up is since we are the backup facility in case of inclement weather for a streetscape, now they've authorized a beer garden. We do not allow alcoholic or controlled substances on the fairgrounds. I can foresee that becoming a problem in the future.
I believe what you're referring to, that event, or that's event strictly just for in town, is what that provision covers. So if it's rained out, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be allowed.
If it's rained out, and it, you move it to the fairgrounds, people are not going to realize that, and they're going to come in with their open containers. and they're going to come in with their open containers or they're going to carry alcohol in their vehicles. And if they started consuming it, who do we rely on to enforce that? Which is the town police force, which they don't enforce at this time during streetscape. So we're going to end up with a conflict right there, I believe.
Well, we'll just have to cross that bridge when we get there. If that come, becomes reality.
Something to think about.
It is, it is. Any further questions, Bob?
When people use the fairgrounds, does everybody that utilize it fill out a application form?
Yes, they're supposed to.
Every person that uses the fairgrounds? No exceptions?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that include if you?
If what?
Does that include if you just go out there and two or four people sit at the picnic tables?
Well, I mean, now, now, you know, we're keeping the main gates locked. And so the only way would be for them to go through the, and I mean, that's, you know, we can't really monitor that.
But I go back to my question, anybody that uses it must fill out an application for them. With no exception.
Correct.
So I just think we need time to look through this.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I gave it to you, just to.
Yeah, I, I still see some things that, that I had some early questions about. But we'll, we'll go through them and I'm glad the event came off well. It was, driving by, it looked like there was a lot of people there.
Yep, there was.
Any further comments? We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, register D's, Miranda Root.
Morning.
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 So as you recall, the last time I was here, I gave you an update for the figures, um, that the office had made so far at that point. So I thought I'd come back to you and just let you know how we ended the year. So from July of twenty twenty till June thirtieth, the office did four hundred and eight thousand, five ninety-eight thirty-five, which is the most it's ever done. Um, the excise tax, which is the sale of all the real estate in the county was two eighty-three, eight seventy-four, um, which is huge. We've never really done over about a hundred and ninety thousand. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars more than normal. And actually this excise tax is about what the office will do in a, what we used to call a good year. So it's been a really, really good year. Um, so all said and done, the office has done the most in its history. So just thought I'd give you that update, so a little bit of good news. Hopefully it'll continue. Unfortunately, I don't have any control over that, but let's hope that we still are on that same trend. The office is doing about the same that it's done at mid-month so far. So hopefully we'll see it continue.
Very good to fold, any questions?
Only, the last thing I have is, um, I'd like to invite you guys on October seventeenth. Um, I will be hosting our district meeting for, um, the counties in our district for the register D's office. I'll be having, um, ten other counties here for, um, our meeting and it'll be at the venue. So if y'all would like to stop in, meet some of the other registers from other counties, introduce yourselves, you're very welcome to do so.
What time is that?
Um, it'll start at ten.
Ten o'clock.
Mm-hmm. Normally there it's about two.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good report. Moving on down, general business, fairgrounds concession, Mr. Cole Edwards, Parks and Recreation.
Long time no see.
Long time.
Of the packet I just handed you, that is an agreement that, um, Billy Noah, a gentleman, has with the Veterans Park in Mount Airy. Our RFP that we put out for the concession stands did not get any bids back. Um, but he has proposed to rent the concession stands from us or lease. Um, for the remainder of this year, he is proposing an event by event basis. Um, and then picking up a contract beginning next year, um, to lease the concession stands. For the remainder of this year, if at all possible, he would like to do the concession stands. And again, just doing it on a event by event basis. That would deem him getting a permit to operate out of concession stands. Right now he has a mobile permit to operate his food trucks, which is what he did this past weekend.
So he's doing the inspections with the health department?
Correct, he has a, he has a, he has a.
He's already got his permit, he's just got to show up, that's good.
That's, well, that's specific for his food trucks.
Right.
He would have to obtain permit for the concession stands itself.
Would, he's planning to do that, that way?
Yes, if.
He's going to use the concessions, not his truck?
If we see to go, to go this route.
Okay.
Um, the, the amount and what he wrote up there was just something quick and a rough draft. The amount that he proposed in that written statement there, um, I think we could do better than that based on the business that he got this past weekend. Um, so that would be something for y'all to discuss.
How many events have we got scheduled?
Well, two major events that he would set up for would be the demolition derby and then the fair. Um, in discussions with him Friday, he would utilize the concession stand for a single day event. For a multiple day event, he would utilize his trucks. So really for the rest of this year, we've got two major events that he would set up for.
We'll take this, study this.
Did he make this amount prior to the experience over the weekend? This offer, two hundred offer?
Yes, and that's, again, that was just off the top of his head. And again, I think we could do better than that. Um, but then as far as the lease agreement that he has with Mount Airy, he's proposing that same amount to us. Um, and just looking at revenue that we had brought in past for concessions, um, that is much larger than any amount that we had brought in previously. Um, but then as far as covering costs, that would cover any cost for us as far as, um, water and propane for the concession stands goes. I have numbers on those, but as far as our electric bill, that's spread out, um, over fairgrounds and the black buildings. So there's no way to narrow that down just to the concession stands. But as far as water and propane goes, what he's proposed would cover that cost and then some.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I make a suggestion?
Right ahead.
At, at this point, it sounds like that may be one of, if not the, option for usage. I would ask the board to consider allowing staff to negotiate on that written proposal and to bring back the results of that to your next meeting for consideration.
Make a motion.
Got a motion, here a second. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? On favor, raise your hand, five o. Negotiating.
Order that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a question for Cole, if I may?
Yes, sir.
That, you know, you, you gave an estimate roughly two to twenty-five hundred people that were at the event. Um, in the future, is there any way to track how many people come and go?
As I mentioned, my first trip to the podium, um, I think it would be best to do either wristbands or tickets or something that we provide to the event holder. So then that way we have a starting number and an ending number that we gave to them. And so then when we get those back, we get a count and then we know how many tickets were sold.
The, uh, just, I, I mean, like when they had the horse show there a couple of years ago, those people were given, I think they were color coded wristbands for participants were one thing. And then for attendees were another. So you could, there was a way to keep track of ticket numbers that were sold.
And for, for this event in particular, I mean, he had wristbands left over from previous year. And so he just used those. We didn't provide anything to him. And so the only way that we could get a good count would be to the money he brought in divided his admission cost.
I think with this event, this last weekend, it shows the potential for what the, the fairgrounds can do, what it can be utilized for. And it not only made money for the people putting it on, but it made money for people in the town, in the county as those people bought groceries or stopped at convenience stores and gas and.
Oh, yeah.
Probably some spent the night too. I think it was a great event.
I agree.
Michelle?
It says here that we agree that, uh, we would not let anyone else sell the products that Billy's concession sells. So that means that the, um, Boy Scouts could sell their ice cream out of their stand.
So in, just in conversation with him, if he's operating out of just the concession stands, so if we get that agreement in place, then he's hamburgers, hot dogs, nachos, chips, that kind of thing. So then that leaves, leaves it open for pizza, barbecue, a number of other things if a nonprofit wanted to come in and set up. Yeah.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. Resolution, declaring surplus property.
Chairman, I, I'll, uh, I'll take that one. If you look at page one, you have a listing under what is called Exhibit A of surplus property that we have at the moment. And we would like to request, uh, declaration of surplus property proceed accordingly with that listing. That listing will grow, but that is our current inventory listing at the time.
Okay, I hear a motion, so moved. Motion and second, any further discussion? On favor, raise your hand, five o. Fairing committee appointments.
Chairman, I'll take that one as well, if I, just bear with me. Okay, so over, over time, there have been some items that have came before this board, uh, consideration, discussion, et cetera. As you're well aware, this past year, we developed a budget committee that was tasked with going through the, through the budgets. We most recently had an animal control ordinance committee. We have had a courthouse committee. Uh, there have been committees, is what I'm trying to say over the last year and a half. I think there are some additional committees that I would like for this board to give consideration to as well. And I, I have four that I would like for you to think about in addition to those that we have already identified. The first one would be an insurance committee. Uh, as you're well aware, uh, both with employee and, and health insurance, there is also general liability. There's a lot of numbers that go into that, that line item. So I think that is an, is a committee and I would ask as we go through this, you know, we can only have two members of each from the Board of Commissioners, but I would like for consideration on an insurance committee. I would like to see us establish a nominating committee. You know, oftentimes there are appointments that come up and sometimes, uh, we, we go through those motions. What I would propose for this committee is to take it a step further and consider putting announcements, putting what I would call an application on our website. And we list all of the appointments that we're looking for people to serve in those capacities and let them submit us of a form of interest that this committee can review and come up and vet through and come up with, you know, qualified people for those appointments. I would also like, you know, we, we're talking about recreation a lot. I think it would be wise to have a recreation committee. We are in the middle of trying to figure out what we're going to do with the pool as an example. There are other recreational facilities. I think a recreation committee would be an enhancement. And lastly, uh, we, we established an animal control ordinance committee, but I would like to see this board consider establishing just a general ordinance committee. I know that we've had some, uh, requests in the past that relates to other ordinances outside of animal control. So I would like to see, uh, consideration given to those four committees for establishment for the remainder of this, uh, calendar year.
Okay. Start, try to, try to work through this and we'll start with, uh, with insurance.
I would like to be on that committee as possible, Mr. Chairman.
Same with us.
Okay, good deal. So we got the two right there, Bobby and Michelle, be on the insurance committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Don't we need to establish the non-existing committees before we start of putting people on them?
It's a technicality, yes. Think you can establish those committees and then place the appropriate members to them.
Make a motion that we establish an insurance nominating recreation and ordinance committee, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, here a second.
Second.
Motion and second, on favor? Five o, thank you. So Michelle and Bobby on the insurance. Nominating committee.
I'll take it.
I'll help with that as also. A recreation committee.
I'll do that.
Be Michelle, any other volunteers? Bobby? General ordinance.
Well, volunteer for ordinance.
How about you? We ain't got you on nothing here.
I'll consider it.
So that's got that knocked out of the way.
Media one, I, I, just long as we, I don't have a tie vote, we can do it.
Okay, moving on down, we're going to forego the item four and the general business that was taken care of last month. Moving on down to item five, jury commissioner appointment. I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Cindy Atwood to that position as commissioner.
We'll second that nomination with the note that Ms. Atwood is my first cousin.
She has been asked if she would serve if elected and she agreed, agreed to do that. So she has been made contact with. It's got a motion and a second, okay? Any further discussion? Not on favor? Five o. And next up is Ms. Rita Miller, tax administrator.
Morning.
Morning.
First thing, um, under general business, we have two, um, appeals of motor vehicle value. First thing, um, under general business, we have two appeals of motor vehicle values, and then I have three requests to approve late applications. So I'll start with the motor vehicle appeal on the nineteen seventy-three Plymouth Duster. This, um, appeal of value was actually submitted after the appeal period ended. So the recommendation for that was no change for the current bill and a five hundred dollar residual value for future billings.
You need a, a vote on each one?
Yes, I do.
I will make a motion to accept that recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Have motion to accept. Any other second? Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Second motor vehicle appeal is on a two thousand seven Toyota Camry. The appeal was received within the deadline period, and on there you will see our, the tech, which is the valuation company that the state uses, Kelly Blue Book, and the motor vehicle owner's opinion of value. And so we just took the mid-range of the thirty-three fifty-five for the assessed recommendation.
Chairman, I'll make a recommendation that we accept the Kelly Blue Book valuation.
A recommendation, a motion?
A motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Raise your hand, five oh.
First request for, um, board approval of a late application. The first one is an earlier disability exemption program. Owner was in the hospital and didn't get his information in by June the first deadline.
Hospitalization been approved, uh, verified?
Has not been.
Do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve that application, Mr. Chair.
Motion here, second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Next one, um, is a disabled veterans exclusion, and the form from the VA was not received until, until after June first. And actually, both, the next, the next one, both of these are for the same reason, the form was not received until after the, June the first. They would have qualified had they gotten information in in time.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve here, second. Second, any further discussion? Both? Both, we're doing two of these at one time?
Yes.
For both? Yeah, both.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All in favor? Raise your hand. Five oh.
There are a lot of, a lot of information in my consent agenda packet for this morning due to the timing, things we have to have done per statute, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on any of that information.
Chairman, I've reviewed and have no questions. We'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Got a motion here, second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Five oh.
Okay, and so the last thing I had in the packet today was just a review of the solid waste sticker. Just wanted to provide you a copy of what it is this year. It's, it's blue this year, and, um, the only difference we had was what we'd talked about previously about the, um, campgrounds and, and rented lots. And so I have created an, a form for them to fill out if they come in and want to appeal that, that I'll bring before the board for that decision.
Sounds good. Anybody any further questions?
None.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Move on down to county manager comments.
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first one is our next work session, which would be your first meeting in August. I would like for us to consider having a work session to talk about the plans to review and consider for the dispersment of what we are identifying as the ARPA money, which is the nearly two million dollars that we will receive over a couple of years timeframe. The first installment of just over a million dollars we should be receiving very soon. So internally, we have been putting together some ideas. We have received some requests for some, from some additional agencies, and I would like for us to think about setting that work session to discuss the potential distribution of those funds.
And that would be the only item for that work session? That's a two-hour work session?
Well, I, you know, if, if there are any other ideas for a second portion of that work session, I would certainly entertain that, but I, I do want to get that.
That's the primary.
That's pretty important.
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
And, and I'll just add, when, when we're considering how we are going to, um, think about dispersing over a million dollars, it may take some time to, to iron those wrinkles and, and understand it completely.
I think we need a motion. Okay.
We can. That, that obviously is number one. I just remember some work sessions, we schedule one or two things and we're finished in thirty or forty-five minutes. I just always like to have something to fall back on, because Drew won't let us add anything, you know, once we, we've started the meeting. That, that's the reason for the question. I just don't want a lot of dead time.
Well, there, there have been several items that we have talked about
Yep.
for the past four to five months. Now, if, if there are any of those that we need to retouch or revisit, then we can certainly do that as well. But if not, to, to make it safe, I would suggest that we look at five o'clock on the work session. That way we condense our, our meeting for an hour to avoid that circumstance. If there are any other items that we need to revisit or retouch, we can certainly add it to it, but that's my primary goal for that work session.
I think we need to address the fire department monies very soon. It's where we can get that figured out, leveled out, where they know where they're, what they're doing on this contingency, contingency money. Daniel came up with some good stuff at last meeting.
Talking about the uses. Okay? We can certainly add that and have that as a second topic.
I think we need to get that behind us. Recommend that we do that.
Just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean we have to look at it. If we run out of time, we move it to the next work session.
Correct.
Correct?
So we're going with five o'clock for an hour?
We're gonna do both those, a stick at four.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, I think we need to look into that.
And, and, you know, just as a side note, there, there are a lot of things that are happening right now. I think we've demonstrated that, we've got some good, I think some good work towards coming up with a, a good plan at the fairgrounds. I think we've got some wheels in motion for that. We have a number of other things. We've got good problems right now. We've, we've got to come up with how we're gonna spend a million dollars. That's a great challenge to have. So let's, let's think about that, and, uh, we'll send out, probably in the next week or so, we'll send out just a, a general listing of what we have received to date so that you have an understanding. And, you know, we'll go from there.
Now, on our next meeting, which will be a night meeting, we've got the RFP for Internet at the fairgrounds. We have a telephone replacement RFP, which will be coming in, I believe, in the next meeting also.
In a month, yes, sir.
So choose your weapons, wire your folks.
All I have.
Thank you, sir. County Commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Mark.
I don't have a lot. I would like to extend the thanks to, uh, Mr. Jenkins for coming today and previously, I think, Servant, David Servant, I think is how he pronounces his name. And I think we've had one other to inquire, but I would like to just put that out there to, we're still seeking the manager's office for anybody in the public who's a, a member of the local clergy to, to reach out and would love to have you to come into the rotation. So maybe you could, some of your fellow pastors you could reach out to and share the word. We certainly, um, that is a, a way forward that we certainly want to continue to pursue. And if we don't get enough to do that and it creates a burden, maybe we end up with, I think the decision was to have maybe one designated chaplain. And I think we actually have someone who is already agreed to doing that, so, but I, personally, and I think the board, as we discussed, would love to have, you know, some rotating members of the local clergy to come through. Just put that out there to, to compel the folks that could help us out there, which are appreciated. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Bobby?
I agree. It's, it's great to be back saying prayer, and I agree with everything that Mark said. And, you know, if we, if we need to, we can appoint our chaplain. I think we have a good candidate. The, um, I would just like to say Mud Sling, I thought was a great success. It was, um, well-attended, and it's just an example of what the fairgrounds can do, you know, for the county, and it does it for the people. It gives them something to do. And usually, it's a different event all the time. And I, I want to be sure that it goes in the minutes that the recreation director said that every person who uses it will fill out an application or should have already filled out an application. The fairgrounds, uh, we're coming up, it's, it's always had a set of rules, but we're looking at some modifications to those rules. You know, VFW had a very good, uh, open house on Sunday, uh, congratulate them and, and then everybody that attended that. Thank the Lord for the good rain that we've had here for the last few weeks. People have been able to get their hay up in between the rains, and, uh, and that's a good thing. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. John?
I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, the minister for your prayer. It's good to have prayer before the meetings, I feel. This nation was founded under prayer, certainly, and it will continue onward no matter what. We'll never outlaw prayer as long as we have pop tests in school, I can assure you that. Also, I'd like to recommend that you go by and look at the VFW, look at the work that's been done, and especially their museum. They put a lot of work in the museum, and it, uh, looks pretty good down there. We have a number of things that will be coming up in the future, uh, we will be discussing with our work sessions. One reason why we broadcast work sessions so that no one can say that we do not do the county's business in the public eye. Having said that, you've got to watch to know what we're doing. And if you're gonna go by innuendo, rumor, and Facebook, man, I tell you what, sometimes your lying eyes, I guess, is what goes on. Having sat in meetings and then hear rumor of control out there, someone called me up and give me down the road because of something I said or something I did, I did at a commissioner's meeting, more than once I've gone back and watched it because I didn't trust my own memory. Do not. Take the word of someone else. Look for yourself, please. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Michelle?
It was a great turnout this weekend at the Mud Sling. I went to it. It was a very good event, so my hats off to Cole and all the folks that, um, that put that on and our first responders, firemen, everybody jumped in. We've had a great parade. Music on Main was great. The cruises are great. It's just, it's just great to see everybody coming back out after the pandemic and kind of getting back into normal life, so it's fantastic. If you haven't been to the transfer facility, it's looking really, really great over there. Good job. Nice and cleaned up, got the concrete pads, um, built in. Like Mr., Mr. John here said, I, I hear lots of complaints on Facebook. Nobody wants to come and share it publicly, but, um, everybody wants to, uh, complain about on Thursday morning at ten AM, there's a line at the landfill. Well, my, my thing to you would be, why don't you go at two PM or why don't you go at eight AM the next day? I mean, why does everybody have to go at ten AM on Thursday morning and sit in line? I went over there at five PM one day and it was like a deserted island, so. Anyway, just to adjust your times, um, I've heard talk about people are upset over the pool. We're working on something. We're working on getting things for the kids, okay? I think the splash pad's a great idea. This, uh, this committee, this recreation committee is something that, um, can formulate lots of ideas. So, you know, we're your elected officials. We want to do what you want us to do, but, you know, we need to know about it. And, um, public comments is a great time to come and share that, so, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, it's hard to follow up here since everything's done about being said, but it's, uh, I too, I was tickled to death at the fairgrounds, that for the people that just came out and supported, they just came out and, and rose there Saturday, and it was a good time and, and a good, good venture there. And that was, that was a big success, and I'm sure there gonna be many more coming this fall. And I too would like to thank the Reverend Tim Jenkins for his prayer today and help us out there. And the VFW, I went by there yesterday at their open house, and it's very nice in there, and I'm very happy for the VFW that everything worked out well for them. And I know there's a lot of talk in the beforehand about moving it to another site, and there's a lot of, a lot of memories over in that building, the way it's been built over the last several years, you know? But they talked about how the process came along this time, and they had a lot of good local people just stepped up and did things out of goodness of their heart. And that, that's meant a lot to those guys, and we, we owe those folks everything, the veterans and everything, and I'm just, I'm tickled to death that everything come together for them like it did. And that's all I have.
Motion to go into closed session after a significant period of time for the dispersment and replenishment of body, bodily fluids, sir.
Got a motion for closed session, that is requested under closed section, general statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one dot A dash six personnel. Motion is second. All in favor? Thank you.